And Susan and then, okay. Yeah, we have a quorum, so. Wow, alrighty. I'm gonna wait till the clock actually turns to seven. I know. Alright, it is seven o'clock. I will call this meeting to order of the Planning Commission, October 23rd, 2017. It's 7:00 PM. We are missing a couple of members, but we do have a quorum, so we are moving forward. First item, approval of the minutes of the special joint city council Planning Commission work session of September 20th and two regular Planning Commission meeting of September 25th, 2017. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then, first item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved. Alright, so, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. Is anybody here who would like to talk about anything that is not on the agenda tonight? Alright, seeing no one, we will move on to our first public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider an amendment to approve, to approve development plans at Cedar Point Commons. The proposal includes a daycare facility on the vacant site of the southwest corner of Richfield Parkway at 65th Street. Staff.
Thank you. Final development plans for Cedar Point Commons were approved by the city council back in 2006. The nearly 30-acre development included Target, Home Depot, TCF Bank, and various inline shops, along with space for additional retail on the once-vacant lots along Richfield Parkway. For many years, market conditions were not strong enough to develop those sites. Last year, the city council approved an amendment to the planned unit development, granting approval of additional inline retail buildings and preliminary approval of a daycare serving 180 children at this location. At the time of that approval, it was anticipated that final approval of the daycare could be granted administratively, as long as all code requirements were met. The applicant is redu-, the applicant has come back with those revised plans and they're requesting to reduce a required buffer yard adjacent to residential property at 6501 16th Avenue, which is the Mount Calvary Church Parsonage Residence. In addition, or in exchange for not accommodating that requirement on the daycare property, the applicant is proposing to plant a landscape buffer on the parsonage property. This requested buffer yard reduction necessitates that the planned unit development amendment be brought back before the council for approval. The applicant is working on an agreement with Mount Calvary Church, which will be provided prior to council consideration on November 14th. Finding that all requirements are met, staff recommends approval of the amendment. We have the applicant here, representative from Primrose Schools, as well as the local franchisee who'll be running this particular location, and we may have a representative from the church here as well, and staff can stand for any questions too. Thanks.
Does anyone have any questions for staff? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just curious about sort of the role of the aesthetics of the building in this decision. There's such a, there's such a significant effort in that retail building and making it look similar to the other buildings that are already there, and I know in some previous decisions around like the McDonald's that was proposed there, one of the specific reasons against it was that it was aesthetically incompatible with the rest of the development. And so I think this is such a great addition and it's great to see that site filled, but I am wondering, because that, those materials don't look anything like the rest of Cedar Point, the roof style doesn't look anything like the rest of Cedar Point, how do, how do the aesthetics fit into the PUD decision?
I think it was, you know, we, we knew when, when the property owner approached the city with this particular use, you know, it was clear that this wasn't going to look like the, the existing and recently added retail shops there, but felt that, you know, while, while, while the architecture does differ, it's, the site has been designed to sort of mesh with, with the recently built retail buildings and, and also the, that it is such a substantially similar, substantially different use from, from retail, that that sort of made it okay for the building architecture to differ as well, given their unique needs.
Commissioner Hefert O'Leary, we did also talk about this in the initial planned unit development amendment, and we talked about this providing some sort of transition back to the residential that is there, moving from the commercial back to the parsonage residence and the existing homes. Those may change, but for the time being, it was felt to offer kind of a buffer between the commercial uses and those existing residential.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question. I read in the brief here that there was a letter of support from the church. Did I read that right?
Yes, and that, that language was changed in one place, but you're right, it wasn't, it wasn't changed in another, where it said there was a letter of support attached. We did not receive that in time for this meeting. I know that the, the church and the property owner are still, I assume they are still negotiating that, but we will require something before that goes before the city council.
Okay, thank you.
But felt that it was, you know, at this point, plans were advanced to the stage where they could go through planning commission.
Okay. Any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Alright, so this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come up and speak, you can come up now, state your name and address and give your two cents. Anyone? No one? Alright, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anybody want to put forth a motion? We can discuss it.
I move approval of the amendment to the PUD.
I second.
Alright, there's been a, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Do you feel the design?
I don't have a particularly, I, I, you know, I, I don't feel totally convinced that it makes sense, but I don't feel that strongly. I, I do agree that it is a different kind of use, and so maybe that justifies it looking different and still being part of the larger plan. So I don't feel super strongly. It would've been nice if they could've at least, say, used like the same, some of the same accents, even if they're using their standard shape that's, I get that that's part of their brand and it's sort of recognizable to have that shape of building. Yeah, I don't know.
When I was looking at it, I, my first instinct too was that the look of it was so very different, and then the more I thought about it, I, I don't want it to look like retail, you know? I want it to look like a school, so it made sense to me that it was different. And then I'm, I'm happy to see that they're going to require, that we're gonna require agreement from the church, right? Because that's their closest neighbor there to impact that, so. Otherwise, I have no qualms about this whatsoever. Any other discussion thoughts?
Yeah, one detailed question about the north side sidewalk. This might've come up in a previous property. It dead-ends at the ramp, and it actually leaves a fairly small sidewalk gap on the other side of the parsonage. I think it's just half of the front of that property and then the half side of the block. Just to facilitate eventual filling of that gap, it would be nice if they did their sidewalk to the property line instead of dead-ending in the middle of the driveway ramp. I don't think that needs to be an amendment or anything, but it would just be nice if that could be addressed.
I, yeah, I, Commissioner Hefert O'Leary, I, I agree that it would be nice if that was addressed. I did look in that area. We, we do sometimes when we have sidewalk stubs like this come in as part of a development where there's not a sidewalk on the adjacent parcel, we do often make them carried across the driveway and to the property line. In this particular area, there were still some existing overhead utilities and things like that. I think there was a utility pole and a guy wire that would've been there, and also, yeah, it would've just dead-ended at the parsonage property. It, it is unfortunate too, because there, there is actually sidewalk on 16th Avenue in front of Mount Calvary Church.
Yeah.
That just, the only places it doesn't exist are right here on 65th and on 16th, but, you know, we're hopeful as well that that could be completed someday.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a pole in the way, I don't think it's worth pushing. I, I do think, you know, reconstructing those aprons can be one of the most expensive part of the project, so it would be unfortunate to kick that down the road for the city to later bear the burden of when it really is an impact of this development, and it should probably be addressed as part of this development. But again, I don't feel strongly enough that that needs to be an amendment. I guess I'm generally in favor of this.
If there's no other discussion, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, our second item here is a public hearing due consideration of a variety of land use approvals related to a proposal for construction of a new auto dealership at 1550 78th Street East. Staff.
Thank you. Maury's Automotive Group has submitted an application requesting approval of a rezoning and planned unit development plans that would allow construction of a two-story Jaguar Land Rover dealership at 1550 78th Street, and that is currently the Adler Graduate School and Jim Ramstead Community Services Center. The property is zoned mixed-use regional and is guided for regional commercial use within the I-494 corridor master plan area. Staff has reviewed the application for agreement with both the zoning code and the comprehensive plan and require, both the zoning and comprehensive plan requirements, and has found it to not meet a number of items. I'll just briefly go through this list of zoning items first. It doesn't meet a 15-foot buffer. Parking structures don't count toward the minimum building height. The building coverage is not met. The maximum impervious surface is exceeded and exceeds the existing. The minimum 5% usable open space is not met. Minimum street level activity use is not met. The rear setback is exceeded. The 15-foot landscape buffer is not provided. Parking lot screening does not meet requirements. Maximum allowable parking is exceeded. Principal entrances are to be architecturally emphasized and visible from the street. Changes in relief are required along 15% of the building on side streets. Ground floor windows are required alongside streets. Pedestrian connections and circulation doesn't meet requirements. Bicycle parking is required. Sidewalks are required along all rights of way. Lighting levels exceed allowable limits. These comments were shared with the applicant as part of our administrative review committee meeting and report. The applicant's revised submittal, which is included in your packet, did not address the identified issues. The applicant has requested a change in the zoning from mixed-use regional to a planned unit development district in order to have some flexibility with those requirements. In order to rezone something as a planned unit development and obtain that flexibility, a development generally is expected to be innovative and creative, to encourage efficient use of land and resources, to promote efficiency in public and utility services, to, and to encourage innovation in planning. Staff didn't feel that the proposed development met those requirements and has therefore recommended that, a denial of the request to rezone. Without rezoning, the applicant would need to request variances from all of the items listed above. Land use approvals also require agreement with the city's comprehensive plan, as we discussed at work sessions in July and October. Although the proposal calls for a use with a regional customer base, the building does not meet the 150,000 square foot minimum, and the proposal does not advance the I-494 planned vision and key components. We went over those at the work sessions, but I'll just highlight those one more time. The vision is aimed at helping the community shape future development in the corridor to be more unique and identifiable, urban in character, pedestrian-friendly, economically sustainable, and ultimately more livable. Urban villages, as this area is described, typically include multiple-story buildings that are more densely developed than the surrounding neighborhoods in order to achieve pedestrian, in order to encourage pedestrian activity. The corridor is not supposed to look like a collection of standalone, single-use buildings that take advantage of the, of the corridor's strategic location, but rather a place filled with variety, vitality, and greenery. Mixed-use development refers to the integration of residential, commercial, retail, employment, civic, recreational, and educational uses. The mix of land uses in a compact area not only supports and enhances each element in the development, but also provides residents with a rich and diverse environment in which to live, workshop, play, and learn. Auto dealerships can be part of a thriving pedestrian-friendly mixed-use development. However, a proliferation of car dealerships does not meet the mixed-use guidance for this corridor. Further, auto dealerships do not tend to invite pedestrian activity or promote services to the immediate neighborhood. Their proposed plans do not attempt to make up for this by combining with another use that would provide these benefits, by providing a neighborhood amenity, or any similar effort to meet the intent of the 494 plan. There are over 700 apartments in the area between Portland Avenue and Trunk Highway 77. As stated in that 494 plan, this area is envisioned as a vibrant area that includes a diverse array of options for shopping, services, restaurants, hotels, and park space for those residents. So based on this review of the proposal, staff has recommended denial of both the rezoning and the planned unit development applications. If you have any questions, we will stand for those.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff? None? No? Okay. This is a public hearing, so we'll open up the public hearing. If anybody would like to come up and speak, state your name, address. You get five minutes. Anyone? No one? Come on. Someone. Come talk to us. Again, just name, address, and then sign in right there.
Got it. Legibly. It's difficult for me. Speak while you, right, so. Hi, my name is Council Chair Daniels. My name's Carl Schmidt. I'm the CEO of Maury's Automotive Group. I live at 2749 Dean Parkway in Minneapolis, Minnesota, so. Don't really know what to say after all that, but, anyway, I just, I wanted to come and talk a little bit, give you a little bit about, of kind of more who we are. I'm gonna let Lynn, who's our facilities director, Peter Coyle, Brandon, speak more to the specifics of the plan and the details. That's kind of their expertise. Just wanted to give you a little bit of insight into kind of, you know, what the expectation is, how we relate with the community, and those kind of things. I am the CEO of the group. I'm in charge of all the operations. So going back a little bit historically, you know, we were awarded the Jaguar Land Rover point about a year and a half ago from the manufacturer, through an arduous process of, you know, sparring with other dealers and talking about, presenting plans and things like that. Anyway, bringing us to the point where they were awarded us the point, and then through that process, they use a company called Urban Science that comes in and selects sites based on demographics in the metro, location of the other store, and they really kind of chose this specific area as a, as kind of, you know, their designated option, their, their first choice. So when we came across the property, presented against their plan, it's kind of, you know, it's, it's really a perfect fit for a variety of reasons. We conserve the entire metro. You get a good flow of people from the different communities coming into the site, and it just, it worked in their point of view, and in our point of view, it works really very well operationally, so we're excited about, you know, hopefully working through this process and ending up in a good positive spot and, and building the dealership there, so. In terms of how we operate, I'm a, I'm a pretty personal person. I grew up on a dairy farm in Wisconsin and kind of have, I bring some of that relationship into how we operate our business. Maury's, people ask sometimes who Maury is. There's not a Maury per se anymore. I worked for Maury Wagner and the Wagner family for about 28 years. Couple, two years ago, we went through a buy-sell, and I have another partner that I brought in and bought the interest of the family, so while Maury's the founder of the company, he's no longer. I'm kind of the, I'm the, the operating partner. I'm a financial partner in the business and I'm the operating partner in the business, so. While I'm not Maury, you know, I'm doing what Maury did for years for the dealership, so. But again, how we operate, we really, we, we keep a personal connection with our employees. We keep a personal connection with the community. I know, I'm sure you're aware of the jobs and the tax revenue and things like that we bring, but aside from that, you know, when I read through the history of the city of Richfield, when I, and I think about our relationship with the different communities, we have a very structured giving program that we, you know, we orchestrate every year, and we always give with, you know, financially to the communities that we have, but more than that, we ask that our employees become involved, and they often do. You know, I, I think we keep a good, healthy relationship on that side, and I think that's an important part of how we run our businesses. Kind of, it's, it's one of our core values and really who we are, and I think that you, as a, a business operating in that area, I think we, that, that brings kind of a, a unique, a unique point of view. You know, we have, we certainly have the financial resources to operate successfully for a long time. You know, we, we're a growing, vibrant organization. You know, the level of jobs, you know, I, I don't know exactly what it'll be. You know, I think Lynn has talked about 65 jobs. That's kind of a baseline as the business grows over time. The businesses in our organization of that size have around 100 employees, so, you know, I don't know where that goes exactly, but. I think, you know, we do kee-, I think if you were to go to the communities where we are, where we operate our businesses, and talk to some of the people in the communities and the leaders in the communities, I think you would find that we have kind of a unique connection. You know, we have a store in, in Eau Claire, Chippewa Falls, and it's, our, our operator's very active. Most of our operators partner with us, and they, they have an equity stake in the business, and we, you know, that ties them to the community that they serve and to the store, and that, that's, that's kind of a, a unique arrangement in our business, so. You know, I don't know, I, I guess I just ask that you keep an open mind to the project. I ask that you listen and, and, and talk to us about, about what your concerns are, a lot of the concerns that, that were addressed earlier by, how do you pronounce the last name, Melissa?
Paleman.
Paleman. I, I think, you know, the, the team can talk about that, and we're certainly willing to cooperate and, and work through a lot of those points, so. I'm always available if you want to talk to me today or afterwards. I, my contact information, I, you know, we're excited about the project. We really, it's important to us that we work through it, and I think that in the end, I think you'd find that we'll be, we'll be a good neighbor and a good citizen of Richfield, so. Anyway, that's really all. If you have questions for me now, or let me sit down, or?
I, I think, does anyone have any questions?
The, so the, the list of items that staff identified, do you guys see yourselves as being able to accommodate most of those?
I'll let Lynn speak to that, so.
Madam Chair and commission members and staff, I'd like to introduce you to Brandon Greis. He's our architect. I'm gonna, I'll be available as well with any other facility-related questions or anything about the development, and I will address one of the comments that Melissa made about wanting a more mixed use or finding another use that would be complementary to ours, because we did go through a lengthy process, process of trying to vet some of those things out, but first I'll turn it over to Brandon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon Greis, 500 North Commercial Street, Nino, Wisconsin. Appreciate you giving me the time. Melissa, one quick question. Were you able to get that revised site plan up on the screen? I know we brought hard copies as well, but I figured if you had it, we could throw it up. I just want to speak briefly to the comments that, that staff had, and I know Melissa spent a lot of time looking at this and, and can appreciate it. Internally, we've needed to take a lot of time, both with the Maury staff, Jaguar manufacturer, the city, talking through the items that we think we can address in a, in a meaningful way to, to hit most of these points. So when I, when we went through this list in the planning commission report, there's 17 bulleted items. We feel we can meet 13 of those 17 bulleted items and get close to other similar developments or close to or equal to within, per se, an example like the Audi store that just got constructed. Just line item by line item, I, I know I have five minutes, so I'll just go briefly here, but the 15-foot buffer on the east side, we, we were able to create something, and within that 15-foot buffer along the entire east property line, we're gonna put a nature trail, pedestrian trail, that we think will not only connect 77th and 78th, but that also gives us help in painting our 5% usable green space area. We thought it would be also nice along there, we'd have some park benches, pedestrian lighting, and we can, we'll get some renderings together to show you how, how nice and usable area that can be. Parking structures in relation to two-story space. We originally had an all-parking structure up front. When we looked at that internally, we realized we do need some office space up there. We needed some second floor, second-floor display showroom as well, so we were able to convert that on the floor plan to meet this, the two-story requirement without having an all-parking garage. Minimum building coverage of 50%, that's one that's just tough. We, we've increased it, we've increased our building footprint and added some other amenities that get us to 41.9. If you look at what was approved for Audi, they're at 29%, and with, with their proposed future parking garage, may get up to 44%, but we feel like we're within, within the range and doing everything we can do to get to that 50%. Impervious pavers, we, we've increased the impervious area on the site to hit the requirements for Melissa, and this is one of the things we can review after we have an opportunity to talk more about some of these changes, Melissa. 5% usable space, again, we talked about that east corridor coming down hitting the 5%. Minimum 60% street level active use is also another tough one. We're, we're within the qualifications of where Audi was. Again, willing to work with staff on what we can do to help us increase our active usage, but that's one that we're gonna have to work with staff, and the PUD would help us overcome that, if we can get there. Same with the rear setbacks, 15-foot, they have a maximum rear setback of 15-foot off 78th Street. We're at 37 feet. I think Audi's at 31. We're within that realm. 15-foot landscape buffer, we have a 6-foot landscape buffer proposed, and Audi was at 5. This is one of those things where these types of facilities just need access to the rear of the building. That's where a lot of the utility takes place. So we're doing our best to accommodate and, and are willing to discuss other options that, that might please the city. Parking lot screening, we've gone through that with our civil engineers and our landscape architect. We're able to meet all those requirements with the revised landscape plan. Maximum allowable parking, we were able to adjust that with, with taking some of that second-floor parking ramp and turn it into office space and showroom. We're able to meet the 110% of the allowable parking spaces, so we got it to the 276 that was requested in the original report. Principal entrance, entrances, again, you know, there is a recess in a very well-defined front entry. We don't have a lot of latitude with the manufacturer as far as what we can do. It's definitely a prototypical building. So we're, we do feel it's well-defined on the front entry with material changes and an inset within the building. 15% of this, of relief along street sides. We did a calculation. We are at 24%. Again, we can review that with you guys on how we're doing our calculation. We did add ground floor windows on the 78th Street side. Other than that, everything does have windows, so we can hit that requirement. Pedestrian connection, we did add that 77th to 78th Walk Street. 77, Bloomington and 78th. So that would do that. That added some bicycle parking, and we can work on, through that calculation as far as if what's required for the square footage makes sense, but we're, we're all about adding some bicycle parking to meet those requirements. And then finally, we have lighting levels. We looked at that lighting plan. It certainly exceeded what was approved for the Audi facility and, and have made the plan revision to be within compliance of where they were required to be. So hopefully that addresses at least the comments that we feel we can do from a plan standpoint to get more in compliance with the city of Richfield.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'd like to invite Peter Coyle up to the mic, and he can present some of his commentary.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission and staff, members of the audience. My name is Peter Coyle. I'm land use counsel for Maury's Automotive Group. I want to walk through the, the policy issues that are outlined in the staff report for you this evening, and do a little bit of compare and contrast with the Audi project, which was approved by the city and by this, by recommended by this planning commission just two years ago. Let me start with, with a brief kind of reminder of the framework that we are all working within, both the city and Maury's Automotive Group, and it starts with the, the land use plan that the city has promulgated for this city. It's well-understood that land use plans are visionary documents. They're not prescriptive in the sense that they articulate specific square footages or specific dimensions or specific setbacks. That's what your zoning ordinance and your subdivision and ordinance is for, and in this case, the good news is, both your land use plan and your 494 corridor plan provide policy guidance that to support the use that Maury's has brought forward to you this evening. And by way of example, I point you to your, your current comprehensive plan, which identifies a number of policies that are relevant that I'll just cite off very briefly. I'm not gonna read you chapter and verse. You know it probably better than I do. One of which is to facilitate a mixed pattern of regional, community-oriented land uses along regional corridors that include the I-494 Cedar Avenue corridor. Improve gateways to create a visual means of welcoming people to Richfield. Provide an economic climate with, within Richfield that will encourage the availability of quality goods and services. Provide an economic climate within Richfield that will encourage the availability of quality goods and services. Accommodate business growth. Encourage and support the development of strong commercial districts that respect the values and standards of the city. Promote development that broadens the tax base of the city. Create commercial districts that sustain specific types of developments and stabilize the economic base of the city. I think it's fair to say that the Maury's project that's before you this evening will satisfy all of those criteria. Now, I acknowledge there are other policies, but again, the comp plan is a visionary document. It's not prescriptive by its terms. Sometimes you can pick and choose what you like and what you don't like. Our job is to do our best to try to satisfy those policies and to demonstrate compliance to the best of our ability. If you dive a little bit deeper to the 494 corridor plan, which was produced by the city a number of years back and referenced by staff, the policy that's most applicable to us under the regional commercial designation, where it identifies the types of uses that would be acceptable within this corridor. Examples of uses located in this category might be large-scale retail, mid-size retail, or a collection of specialty retail tenants. We think, as I'll point to in just a minute, we think again, that policy supports the project that's before you this evening. Then I'd like to shift to the zoning policies of the city, which is the primary regulatory control that the city has available to it to determine whether this use is appropriate for the site. And again, the good news is we have very specific guidance from the city on this point. The zoning of this site permits an automotive dealership of this type, albeit by a conditional use permit process as staff has noted to you. We have chosen to pursue a planned unit development in order to accommodate some of the unique site features of this property, the Adler property in specific, and the use that's been proposed. But by doing that, we don't forfeit the underlying use rights of this district. It's zoned and it's zoned appropriately for the use. So we don't relinquish that right and I'll talk through that in a little bit more detail here in a second. One of the suggestions that's been made in the staff report is that since we have a number of auto dealerships on the corridor already, that's enough. I regret to tell you that that's not the city's prerogative. Once the city establishes the zoning for this property or any other property within the city, you have to live by that zoning just like we do. And in this case, as I say, the city's zoning decision, the policy decision that you've made, supports the use that's before you tonight. Could I get the camera to focus down on my notes for a couple of minutes now, just so I can walk you through a few things?
Can we have the technician activate the doc camera, please? All right, it's going to zoom in and focus. Try to focus there.
I'm going to make some references to the 2015 staff report and findings that were part of the Audi process that was pursued by the city just two years ago. And while I've put this up in hope that you might be able to read it yourselves, by coincidence, I happen to have my own copy, so I can make it a little bit simpler for all of us.
And we can see it fairly clear, so.
Okay. All right. Well, I want to just quickly touch on the policies and the decisions that were made as part of the Audi process. Let me start with the most important one. In contrast to the Maury's application that's before you this evening, which is correctly guided and zoned for this use, as I'll confirm further with you based on the staff report of 2015, the Audi application required that you modify the land use designation for the property, which was a four-fifths vote of the city council, and then adopt a new zoning overlay to accommodate their use. Our zoning is already established. Our land use designation is already established for the regional commercial designation that we need and the mixed use designation that we need. That's a very important and fundamental point to start with. We already have our zoning in place. In contrast, the Audi application, which was approved and we supported it, we think it's a great project, that required an extraordinary step by the city to allow that to occur. Having done that, the city can't now say, "We have too many. We don't want anymore." You made the decision to bring Audi into the comp plan and into the zoning that allowed it to go forward. We're already here and we get to stay here. So I just, I just offer that to you respectfully. The city's market consultants have previously indicated in your land use documents that retail alone would be difficult to sustain. But it did say that regulation of the I-494 corridor should be allowed to take advantage of the visibility to the pedestrian or the motorized traffic that comes across the freeway moving east to west. In reviewing the Audi application, in contrast to what the staff report would suggest to you this evening, for the same use, the exact same type of use, the staff conclusion, based on all the policies that are in play this evening, is that proposed project is substantially compliant with all the underlying policies of the city. But this evening, you've heard on, in a variety of ways, the conclusion of your staff that this application is not compliant. You can't reconcile those two findings by the city. I would also note that while the applicant was determined to have had a roughly 44% lot coverage ratio for their project, they've only built out the first phase and they have a number of years, potentially four years, in which to pursue the second phase, which would be the ramp structure along with some additional space. And even within that finding, that requirement is conditioned on language that allows them to right-size that ramp to what they need. So it's entirely possible that they'll come back to the city and say, "You know what? We don't need as much ramp as we thought we were going to need and we'd like it to be smaller." We don't know that yet, of course. But what's important to know is, as we sit here today, the project that they have constructed is substantially smaller than the project that we are proposing to build immediately. These are additional findings out of the staff report. And again, I'm offering those to you, these to you, not to remind you of what you did two years ago, for those of you who were here, but to say to you, we are the exact same project, one block removed, on property that is already guided and zoned correctly for this use, in contrast to what Audi went through. Here's one of the important findings of the staff report. A car dealership is a unique type of regional retail to which the general rules used to construct the corridor plan, referring to the 494 corridor plan, may not be applicable. I'm quoting still, and I can get you the 2015 staff report if you are questioning this. Quoting further, "Dealerships are a definitive example of destination retail. The destination component makes regional commercial development possible in this location." Continuing further, "Staff believes that a regional commercial development is compatible with the city's vision for the area and would not be detrimental to future development." Quoting further, this is referring to Audi now again, "The applicant has requested a planned unit development district, as are we, which would be consistent with the requested comprehensive plan amendment, which the city council did approve and which we already have." Just a couple of final comments, Madam Chair and Planning Commission members, and I'm happy to stand for questions. In addition to the land use and zoning amendments, which were critical to their application at the front end, their use would not have been possible but for that. Audi received several deviations from the strict letter of the city code. As Brandon Reese has indicated to you, our application, albeit with a modified site plan, essentially is compatible and consistent with what those findings were for the Audi project back in 2015. It's important to note that in the staff report, when you read the totality of the Audi staff report, not once did you find an objection to the automobile dealership use or its so-called incompatibility with the vision of the city for the 77th Street corridor or any adjacent surrounding uses, in contrast to what's been suggested to you this evening. So in conclusion, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission, what I would offer to you respectfully is the city has the ability to establish the zoning rules that are applicable to this site. You've done that. The city has the ability to establish the land use policy that's applicable to this site. You've done that. It's our job then to work within that framework and to make sure that the application we put forward is as compliant as possible. And in the event it's not, to pursue the PUD process that your code allows us to pursue, in which we are doing this evening. The city does have the right to make appropriate reasonable conditions on the application based on the conditional use permit process that ties to the PUD process. We understand that and we'll work with you on that. But what the city does not have the ability to do respectfully is pick winners and losers, particularly when you've modified the rules to allow a competing use, which is Audi, when the other use, the Maury's Automotive Group proposal, already falls under the rules that you've established previously for the site. So we would certainly urge your support for the application. I want to thank Melissa and John and the rest of your staff for really being very open and courteous and fair with us and trying to have conversations about this. Melissa's been very clear really from the get-go as to what her belief is as to what the city policies require. Her staff report reflects that. Regretfully, we disagree with it and we think that the record is quite clear that the quite contrary conclusion should be that this use is permissible and should be approved and we certainly would request your recommendation of support this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I do have a few questions for Mr. Coyle, but I'm wondering if it's possible to clarify a couple of things with staff first. I guess one question I have, there are a number of specific like dimensional issues related to Audi that they mentioned that under their PUD they were allowed to do. Are those specific dimensional issues in a PUD precedential and everybody has a right to have them?
No, they are not.
Okay. I guess I'm also wondering, they also mentioned the fact that Audi required a comp plan change to have that and suggested that because that comp plan change took place, that they should be more entitled to that decision. Is that the case?
No, that is not the opinion of the city or the city attorney.
Okay. And then I guess my questions for Mr. Coyle, and it was a very thorough, this is probably one of the most thorough presentations we've ever had and I really appreciate you taking the time and looking at Richfield. But I was struck by one thing that you said, that sometimes you can pick and choose what you like and you don't like. And I understand that you feel city staff may have done that, but of course you and your zealous representation of your client may have done the same. So I'm wondering if you could talk about a couple of specific things from the staff report. There's a citation in, I think the findings are fact, "Planned unit development designations are intended to encourage innovative and creative development and efficient use of land and resources." As a result of their opinion of you not meeting that requirement, there are all these incompatibilities. What do you think about your development is innovative and creative and makes an efficient use of land and resources?
I'm only a lawyer. I'm not an architect. So I don't have the ability to respond to the innovative and creative part. What I can respond to is the staff and the city council reached the conclusion that the Audi project, which is functionally and visually the same project as what we are proposing this evening, and they found that that policy was in fact satisfied. With that, I'll let Mr. Reese respond as to the architectural.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Regarding innovation on this project is Jaguar Land Rover has put together one of the most innovative retail programs out there from a fit feel and finish. Very timeless, modern and classic building that they've studied on how to not only display their cars, but bring retail guests into an environment and experience an environment that's unlike any other in the car purchase and the guest relations standpoint. Both the materials, the pedestal, the chambers, the windows, we feel make this a very unique project for the city.
And could I just expand on that a little bit? In terms of the district that you're creating, that you contend this adds to and improves, what does this development do for the larger district? For the people who aren't going to buy a Jaguar but are walking past, who live in the apartment building next door, who are going to be enjoying the other uses that continue to grow here, what innovative and creative aspect do you have that benefits them?
I, you know, Brandon touched on the design a little bit. I think when you look at, you kind of have to see one of these facilities. I went out prior to engaging in the process with Jaguar Land Rovers. I went out to, they built, I think there's one of these facilities so far in the country. There are two or three under development currently, but right now there's only one that's built. So I went out and toured the facility. It's in downtown Salt Lake City. And there is, you know, design, I guess everybody has a different opinion on design, but I mean, design is something that when properly executed does a lot for the space and the passerbyers and the community in general. I think you can see that with some of the projects here, there, across the street. I met with Mall of America a few weeks ago because they're doing another luxury project and they wanted us to be a part of that with a different brand, but I think you can see. So as you're coming into that corridor and you have this, really the building is stunning. You know, the cost per square foot for us, Brandon referenced materials, is probably two and a half to three times higher than any one of our other facilities that we've ever built. This will be by far the most expensive facility that we have ever built. And the design, it's just when you, when you drive by there, it's just captivating. It's really beautiful. And you might not feel, see that, "How can a car dealership be that way?" It really is. So what does that do to the community? I think as you're coming around that corridor, you have a beautiful facility. I think it says something about the community itself. And, you know, I would expect that there are certainly certain residents of the city that will hopefully transact with us at a variety of levels. In terms of the service in the community, the easiest pool of applicants for jobs would come, I would think, from the communities that surround the facility. That's where most of our employees currently live within a tight radius of our facilities and I think that has a lot of value. But I just think having that at that gateway when you come in, it's impressive. And I think people, it gives people a sense of pride when you have that and I think it makes a statement about who you want to be and, you know, and what it does for the community. It's really impressive. It really is. I don't know how to state it other than that. The facility's really impressive. And it's, they spent, you know, the Brits spent a ton of time in going through each design element and making it to be, keeping it in a real contemporary mindset. It's a warm, inviting, comfortable space, unlike anything we ever have. I think it's really cool. I think you'd be proud to have it in your city. I really do.
Thank you.
Two other quick things. One thing we are trying to do to help this project is create a very nice pedestrian walkway connection along that east property line between 77th, 78th Street. The front of the building, we feel pulling that up to 77th, similar to the others, really helps create that mixed-use urban feel that you're looking for, where you get the building pulled up front, strong density along the street side, a lot of human scale elements out front, including plantings, the height of the windows, the height of the rooms, that all just relates to that urban feel and we feel, you know, this in conjunction with the other things going on really creates that mixed-use atmosphere that the city or the comprehensive plans chase.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I think part of the mixed use is not just the appearance of the mixed use, but also like actual different uses happening on site. And I see in this report that staff has encouraged you to partner with additional types of users and that's based to meet the vision? And what have you guys looked into that?
Carol, do you want to talk about that?
Sure.
We worked, we worked really kind of extensively to try to find another partner that could come in to the property and we actually thought we had a reasonable solution. The issue comes down to Jaguar Land Rover and their control over the site and it's, you know, it's a difficult process because one, we have to make sure that we're acceptable to you. We have to make sure that it works for us. And then you have Jaguar Land Rover that's very specific and prescriptive in their, in their direction and how they want this done. So, you know, as, when we presented the plan to them, they sent, you know, they sent everything over to the UK and they came back and said, "No, basically. We don't see that. The site's tight the way that it is. We're right at the edge of of square footage for the site and, you know, having the two stories helps that issue." But it just, in their point of view, it didn't support the business the way that they wanted it supported and they really didn't. They told us no directly.
Madam Chair, Commission members, we also did look at having a separate small retail building in the L part of the site. And we talked and met with Starbucks and we met with Pennies. We met with a couple of different coffee users, trying to see if that was a viable development for them and the traffic counts just aren't there. They said this would not be a site for a company-owned site and it wouldn't be, and a franchisee wouldn't want to take it on, just because of the, they, their belief is that you're not going to draw the traffic back from the exit, back into that site to go get a cup of coffee.
Just to follow up on that, I think that one of the ideas of the comp plan was to make this area a walkable area for the people that lived in the area. And so whether or not And so whether or not the traffic pattern of people just driving by would stop for that, I guess that wasn't actually the entire plan in our comp plan. It did involve the people that live in the neighborhood.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, thanks for that comment. As Brandon has indicated, the updated site plan includes sidewalks around the property, including the new trail. So that certainly addresses the pedestrian access point. But to the mixed-use point that you made, I just want to, I just want to say this again respectfully, that standard was not applied to the Audi project. So we've done, we thought we could attract a separate user to the site, but the truth of the matter is, the traffic counts along 77th are frankly low. And we don't expect them to increase very substantially, even with the new underpass constructed. While that will facilitate some cross-traffic, frankly, a lot of that traffic is going to be industrial coming from the airport property, because that will be an easy pathway for them to get on the freeway at, I guess it would be Portland, or, yeah, Portland I think it would be. So just from a pure, objective business standpoint, we talked to the folks most likely to want to come to this site, and they dismissed it, as Lynn has indicated, out of hand because the traffic volumes don't support it.
Thank you. Any other questions? None? Is there anybody else who is here to speak for the?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who's here to speak for the open house? Yes, please come up. State your name, address, sign in. Five minutes.
I'll sign in later. My name's Terry Straub and I live at 75th and Portland. I was here when Adler was here last week and their letter. Nobody's talking about Adler. Adler owns the building. He's got 19,000 square feet of space that he hasn't been able to rent. This is, he isn't sustainable there. The question is, we have a customer that wants to come in and build a huge building, give a $700,000 worth of tax revenue, and real jobs, not coffee shops and fast foods and all of that. I don't understand the problem. Richfield is Richfield. The freeway is what we're about and will always be about. You talk about innovative design, how innovative was Target and Home Depot? How many bike stands does Target and Home Depot have? Who's going to use that? I don't, I just don't get where we're at to this. Another car dealership. We don't need any more fast food and coffee shops and the poor job. They're here to put a major investment in here, and we need all the investment we can get, because as the mayor stated the last week, we need the money. Because we've continually tore houses down to make, like, 66th Street, those properties that we took down from 66th Street are gone. That tax revenue is gone. Same with the neighborhoods we tore down across from Target and Home Depot. That land has been sitting there for years, not generating any revenue. And we didn't even have to bribe these people with TIF money. So Richfield is, should use its strength, and its strength is 494. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody else here? Is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. It's closed.
So I'd like to move in support of the creation of a PUD for the benefit of the program, of the project. I think it's exciting to have a high level of redevelopment in the area, even if it is another car dealership. I think the car dealership has a potential to bring substantial improvement to that space. It is an isolated corner right now in Richfield. We've been talking about a tunnel for years. We still don't have a tunnel. That corner is not a magnet for activity. I've, I'm quite familiar with that area, and it is not going to support traditional retail shopping. And I think this is an outstanding opportunity for the community, an outstanding opportunity for Richfield, Richfield jobs, and the tax base.
All right, so we have a motion to create a PUD for this area. Is there a second? I'm going to need some procedural help here. So if there's a motion and no second, do we?
Someone else can make a motion?
Someone else can make a motion.
I move the staff recommendation to recommend denial of both requests.
Is there a second?
Am I able to ask another question?
Yeah.
Okay. Could you clarify again, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it would be, I would love to drive a Land Rover, like Land Rovers. However, when I read the comp plan, that's just like not what I see as the business that should go there according to the 2005 comp plan. And so my question is procedurally, how would planning, a planning, you know, what are the legal issues around the Planning Commission deciding to go against what the 2005 comp plan has said?
Right. If you wanted to vote for this project, you would need to find that it agreed with that comprehensive plan. If you don't believe it does, you must vote against it. You can recommend that the council further study this area, amend the comprehensive plan, to have, to put language in there that would allow this. But if you don't think that this fits with the comprehensive plan, you can't approve zoning regulations that require, or zoning land use approvals that require compliance with that plan. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
So just one more question. Could the applicant have put forth a building and site plan with an auto dealership that would have complied with the comp plan without variances? Is it, in other words, is it a matter of the building and the structure? So the fact that they want to build something larger, does that, is that why we're recommending no? Because if they would have presented something that was smaller, would we be obligated to say yes?
No. Staff's finding is that a standalone auto dealership, there are all of these zoning requirements that it doesn't meet. But as part of the planned unit development or part of a conditional use permit, you have to agree with a comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan specifically says, "We don't want a collection of standalone users that just take advantage of the viewing from 494 here." It calls for a variety of uses throughout the district. Like it says in the staff report, an individual auto dealership can absolutely be part of that. But I would disagree with Mr. Coyle that we cannot say this is enough. This is a mixed-use district. You do have the discretion to say this is enough.
I missed the second work session. Can I get a quick overview of the sentiment of that conversation from those that were there?
I was there, and the sentiment was that we had a summary of the comp plan and then a summary of the project, and basically just talked about what we would have to do in order to make those match up, I guess. And everybody basically, not everybody, many at the table said that they just needed more information about the comp plan and the details of that, as how it related to the development. Am I getting that correct?
That was what I recalled. I think people felt that they didn't know exactly how realistic the comp plan was. I don't know that there was disagreement with the recommendation that's before us tonight, that this development is incompatible with the comp plan, but there was some back and forth about that. Mainly, people wanted more information. The only sort of loud and clear thing I heard from council members there was that they did not want to do a one-year moratorium, that they wanted to act if the applicant wished to apply now.
Madam Chair, can I respond to Commissioner Vizecki's question of a moment to go to the staff?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, respectfully, I disagree with your staff's conclusion. The zoning code meets something. And when property is identified as permitted in a given zone, albeit with a conditional use permit, had Maury's chosen to permit a straight zone application without using the PUD option, which admittedly is a, is a second layer that, you know, creates a little bit more give and take between the city and the applicant. But if they had chosen to go the straight zone approach with a conditional use permit and they met the standards, the city would have to approve the application. And the best evidence of all of that is the fact that it approved an Audi, the same type of use, within one block of the site, and changed all the rules so that it could be permitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Here's where I'm standing, what I'm thinking. Multiple different things. One, I interpret the comp plan as this is not a fit. Moreover, I don't feel the PUD that this is innovative. Maybe the design is, I, you know, we have no examples of the design and what's been presented, but that doesn't scream innovation to me. And I'm looking at the plan that's in front of us, and there are 17 requirements that were given, and you say you can meet 13, but without staff review and without kind of comments on that, it's hard to make a decision on that. And so I am right now inclined to say this, what was presented to us today does not meet our requirements. So I will second your motion at this time. So we have a motion, we have a second discussion? I mean, I think I've just given my two cents.
That may be another additional question for staff. So if this were not a PUD, you would go to the underlying zoning. The underlying zoning is that this would be conditionally permitted. We didn't really get a review of that since that's not what they applied for, but if I'm not mistaken, one of the conditions of the conditional use permit is that it has to be, contribute to this mix of land uses. Is that correct?
Correct. One of the conditions of a conditional use permit is that it agrees with the guidance for that district in the comprehensive plan.
So in fact, it wouldn't really meet?
Correct.
The underlying zoning?
Correct.
Okay. I guess the other thing that just troubles me to see from the applicant, and I'm also not even clear, we've seen a site plan tonight and a site plan in our packet. Are we able to consider the one tonight, or are we acting on the one that was given to us and reviewed by staff?
Well, we got these plans today, this afternoon, these revised plans. The applicant has had since August 17th, the date of that ARC report, to submit revised plans. So, you know, you can vote on whichever set of plans. I can't give you a full review, just glancing at the plans. There was not time, there has not been time for Public Works to even look at them. They have not even seen these plans. Or any of the other departments that commented as part of that administrative review committee report. That's why we have that meeting, that's why we present the report. This was, this meeting was actually delayed in order to have that work session, so the applicant had additional time to revise those plans before we would present them to you and we could review or revise that, and we didn't see them.
Thank you. Yeah, I am somewhat independent from the motion that we're considering tonight. I have a little trouble to see three months go by and to not see really simple, inexpensive changes made until the day of the, of the public hearing. In terms of the motion and why I really support the staff recommendation, I think it's very clear that a proliferation of these car dealerships, a bunch of these together, is not what was envisioned for the area. I think it does dominate it, and I think it significantly detracts from the livability. If this one site existed in a vacuum and we didn't have to consider the rest of the corridor, I think, you know, they made a good sell. It's an attractive building, it's an expensive building, as the applicants have pointed out. And it could bring, on its own, a lot of tax base. But if it detracts from the overall development of the district and it means that we don't build out what we said we were going to build out in 2005, I don't, I don't think that's worth it. I don't think it agrees with the comprehensive plan, and I think staff's interpretation is correct.
And my concern is that in the hopes of an aspirational goal, we have vacant parcels for 20-plus years, as we've successfully managed to accomplish as a community. If we have a viable project in front of us, one that substantially improves the area, substantially improves the tax base, improves employability, we're foolish not to take it.
Well, and that said, one of the complications for me is I grew up in Richfield, I've lived here for 30 years, and sort of the development that I've seen as a resident here is like, "Oh, Target wants to come here, great, let's figure out how to get them here. Maury's wants to come here, great, let's change our comp plan and figure out how we can fit them in." And that's been sort of a critique that I've heard from a lot of residents in Richfield. They're like, you know, there's a number of developments that have happened that way. And the other thing, I know there are many residents that are for this plan. I've not heard anybody on the East Side talk about being against the car lot. So the hard part for me is that we're disregarding the work that the 2005 residents of Richfield did. And I guess that's the part that's like sticking with me, because obviously, like, putting in a path makes it able for pedestrians to walk, but it's not creating a pedestrian-friendly, like, environment for people to, you know, buy things and have their own little, excuse me, I have a cold, a little community like that. So that is my complicated.
And the only thing I'd raise for that is it's, it's easy to ask people what their Christmas list is in the absence of an actual opportunity. So in 2005, people may have offered up what their wish list was for a particular utopian vision. Whether or not that is ever going to be economically feasible is an entirely different matter.
And I like this proposal. I just don't like it where it is and where it's located in this particular site, right? I think it's not them versus Audi, it's, this is not a comparison. It's, to me, it's not about Jaguar, it's about this particular site and what's around it and the, and the vision for that area. Just doesn't meet what I interpret the comp plan to be. All right, any other discussion? We do have a motion and a second, so the motion is to go staff's recommendation to not approve. If there's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. All right, we'll wait a second until these folks shuffle out quick. All right, our next item is to cancel a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit amendment and variance to 7700 Nicollet Avenue. Staff?
Thank you. Andelay, Taqueria, and Mercado submitted an application requesting a conditional use permit amendment to allow a building addition to accommodate a walk-in cooler. Staff's initial calculation of parking requirements indicated that additional parking spaces would be required beyond the 28 stalls that are provided on-site, thereby requiring a variance. After the application was submitted, staff recalculated the parking requirements and found that sufficient parking exists to allow the addition. Without the need for variance, the requested CUP amendment can actually be issued administratively. Because notice of the public hearing was published in the sun current, the Planning Commission must cancel the public hearing. That's all I have for you.
I move we cancel the public hearing.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Our third item then is to reschedule our December meeting. Wait, why doesn't this one come up? Okay. So consider a motion of rescheduling the regular December Planning Commission meeting, which would have fallen on Christmas Day, to December 11th. I will so move this recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Perfect. All right, meeting agenda, let's go back here. Liaison reports, Community Service Advisory Commission. I have no report. City Council? No, she's not here. HRA?
I have just two quick updates. It was Doris Rubenstein's last meeting, after 10 years of service, so I just thought it would be great to recognize her after all the work she's given to Richfield, so there's that. And then the other thing that I thought was very interesting is that I learned the origination of the name Chamberlain for the Chamberlain Developments. And it was a World War I
of the name Chamberlain for the Chamberlain Developments, and it was a World War I pilot named Clyde Ward. Oh, he was named Cyrus Chamberlain, and the other one was named Wold, Ernest Wold. And so it was two World War I pilots, and they wanted to stay with the name Chamberlain to kind of honor that because the, also the first airport, and Minneapolis-St. Paul Airport was named after them as well. So I thought that was really interesting.
Lovely. Richfield School Board, voting is now open, I will say, for, there's three open spots on the Richfield School Board, and I think five candidates. Am I right? Yes. And two referendums, so go vote. You can come see me at Sheridan. Transportation Commission.
And I am liking what we talked about at the last meetings. They're always awkwardly scheduled, they have opposite ends of the month, but coming up, we do have more information about that D-line bus rapid transit on Portland Avenue, and there is still an unresolved issue about what or how many stops will be between 66th and 77th Street. There is still a possibility, that's concerning to me, and I think concerning to residents who live along Portland, that there would only be one stop and potentially six or seven blocks between bus stops.
Chamber of Commerce?
No report.
Anything else? Any other special? Nope. City Planner Report?
Thank you. I just want to remind you, you have an extensive calendar of work sessions that Matt has been continually updating for you. You'll know now why we don't generally send those out in advance, because they change so often, but we're, we're trying to forecast that for you for planning purposes a little bit better. As a reminder, there's a work session tomorrow night with the council and HRA, starting at 5:30. Dinner will be served at 5 o'clock. That's an update on our comprehensive plan update process, and followed by an affordable housing discussion. And then I think you'll have a little bit of a break until like the third week of November, when work sessions will start again. And as a reminder, your chair will be presenting tomorrow night to the city council, an update of this past year's activities of the Planning Commission. So if you have any?
Any highlights from now?
Yes, yes, or items that you'd like to bring to the council's attention that the Planning Commission is, thinks are important to study going further or going forward, that those are good things to include in that presentation.
All right, next meeting time and location is tomorrow, but officially November 20th is our next regular meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second? All second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.